Yeah, I've done worse.
There'll be a lot of people there next month.
Make so?
Probably won't even have enough seats.
Good to see that dedication.
What are you coming for?
Suggested administrative approval fee two hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, what the hell was it?
It is a lot of money. Is that like one time or is that every year?
Well, we don't know.
The hell is it? I can't remember now. I know it was gonna be a lot of people in either protesting or.
So it's basically just they apply, do the butters get notice?
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't know why.
So they get an opportunity.
Too much work on rentals.
So they get an opportunity to come in and complain.
They don't need an opportunity.
Trying to think of what is on the agenda for next month, there'll be a lot of people here.
That's true.
It's the thing that's.
Oh, historic district.
Well, maybe that we just need to change the.
No, that's not.
Permitted use.
No, it's already in the paper.
Come with it.
Huh? Is the chair at the next block?
I don't know.
Maybe.
Well.
We're making a last month we have.
Good chance of it.
I'm expecting that they will let us know.
We're supposed to have an application.
We put together a.
Oh, the short term lodging came in today. My committee to the table.
They forgot about it.
For three lots of provision. Something else.
Yeah, I don't know who.
I don't know, the HOA is gonna be.
There'll be some questions though. Some pushback on this. I'm not.
Okay.
Last week, last time's.
I'm gonna never figure this chair out.
Yeah, it's broken.
I couldn't believe how much we were doing.
In the eleven.
Pulls out to rock.
Got it. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting of the City of Laconia Planning Board to order. And we'll start with a roll call.
Brett Bilbo.
Present.
Jay Forster.
Present.
Dave Broughton.
Present.
Mike Delavecchia.
Here.
Edwin Bonas.
Here.
And Peter Burnett.
Here. Thank you. And also with staff here, we have Dean Trefethan, we have Rob and Karina. Okay. Acceptance of minutes from the previous meeting. Does anybody have any additions or questions about the minutes?
Nope.
Sensing none, I'd accept the motion to accept the minutes from the July second meeting.
I propose to accept the meeting from July's meeting.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carries. All right. Uh, I guess we're gonna start off with a presentation regarding the short term lodging draft that we should all have here.
I believe everybody has a copy. Short term lodging subcommittee that you created at the last planning board meeting met once, had a very lively discussion. Mostly talking about various philosophies, pros and cons of the issue. I don't think that this issue is settled in everyone's mind one hundred percent. The only change that we made in the proposed language is section five. We changed twelve separate rentals to eighteen separate rentals. That provision would apply to all zones where it's allowed. Except for the CR and the SFR zone where it would be unlimited. The CR zone is a commercial resort, the general Weers and Weers Boulevard area. And the SFR zone is the section along from basically the Weers Beach Fire Station down Endicott. Street east to, I believe, to the Guilford Town Line. So those two areas, it is permitted currently with a administrative approval. And we have had several of those this year. And under this proposal, it would be continue to be allowed with no restrictions on number of rentals. And then elsewhere, it would be eighteen. And just as twelve was somewhat of an arbitrary number, eighteen is as well. Although it was felt by the members of the subcommittee and I've also had input from people who are in the business of. Particularly the people who are in the business of managing properties and, you know, they have dozens, if not. You know, scores of properties that they manage over the summer for short. Basically what we would consider short term rental at this point in time. Uh, they thought that was a reasonable number when I've had my discussions with these various people. So everyone on the subcommittee, although not necessarily in agreement. With everything here. Was willing to. Take the attitude of assuming the rest of you concur to. Send this to public hearing at the next planning board meeting. Get public input on the proposal. And then at that time, I think you'll hear from a couple of members of the subcommittee with some of their reservations and you can. Consider them at that time. So take any questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm questioning this letter from Pready and Flaherty.
Yes.
That was sent to us as far as whether or not we have, I guess, legal authority to implement something like this. Could you please address that for me?
I will. They represent a specific part of the industry that is involved in or parts of it are involved in short term rental. It is their opinion or the opinion that they would like you to believe that you should believe. That we don't have the authority. As you know, we have put this through our own legal counsel multiple times. They are very confident that, I don't have the supporting documentation in front of me, but in previous. Papers that I've handed out to you, there's reference to several RSAs and definitions. Using those as the supporting premises. Our legal counsel is very confident that we are enabled, we are enabled to do this and we're within our legal rights. If whoever, whether it's this law firm or anybody else disagrees with that. If this eventually becomes an ordinance, you know, you guys pass it on to city council and city council passes it. Then they're free to challenge that in the normal means, but I think it's a. It's a good indication of there is opposition to this proposal out there. It is not just driven by people who are engaged in this activity. It is a number of different groups or aspects that are. Trying to oppose any legislation comes along. I get that, you know, it's the normal course of things when any municipality is doing something that is. Hasn't been or isn't commonly done elsewhere, particularly in the state. So, yeah, I get it and it's certainly something to consider, but I think it's an opinion and everybody's got one.
All right. So why are we doing?
I'm sorry?
Why is Laconia doing it?
Why is Laconia doing it?
What is the problem that it attempts to address?
I think the problem that it attempts to address is addressed in the. Section M, the part that labels section M, short term lodging. To preserve the traditional character of residential neighborhoods that can be negatively impacted by this type of use. And to help preserve the quality and the quantity of the housing stock for year round residential use. And at the same time, when you go through the provisions, we are allowing people to do it. With some restrictions and some oversight. When you compare this proposed ordinance to. Ordinances that have been passed in other cities like, say, New York or New Orleans. Or San Francisco, just to use three as examples. This is very permissive when you compare it to those cities. And they have their issues and they have their concerns. And we have our issues and our concerns and they have some similarities, but I don't think that we have. The exact same problem that they have. However, to, you know, to specifically. Zero in on your question, Mr. Chairman. The experience that we've had with some of these types of rental situations has been noise, trash and parking. Those are the three biggest things. And. What's occurred with short term rentals, although they've been occurring in the city for decades. In traditional senses, what's changed is, and I hate to blame it on the technology, but that's essentially what has changed over the past several years. And because of the technology. There is not that personal interreaction that there used to be between the owner of the property and the renter. You know, the owner used to be there to hand you the key, to collect the check or whatever at the beginning of your week or your weekend. And now that's not the case. You know, there's a lockbox with a code on it. There's, everything's done on the internet. And those things in and of themselves are not necessarily bad things. They're not, you know, they're not the demon here. The issue is the attitude that people bring where you have, when you don't have that personal connection. And they're not gonna be there next week or next year or anything else. And is, they have that feeling of they can do whatever they want because there's no repercussions. And it's a minority of people that feel that way. It's a minority of rentals that it has happened at. The interesting thing is where it has happened, it has happened repeatedly at the same properties. And so it really comes down to a responsibility of the property owner. More so than the responsibility of the renter to control the situation. And that's what these basic six things are trying to do from the standpoint of. Make the property owner understand you have a responsibility to provide a safe place for your renters. But you also have a responsibility to maintain the peace in your neighborhood for your neighbors. And I'll give you an example. We had someone call in this week. And he did not want to make an official complaint. He just wanted to talk about the situation. The situation he's having is the person next door is doing short term rentals. And he has not had a problem with that. But recently, this person changed their listing on whatever platform they're using, and I don't know which one it is, that they're dog friendly. And now they're getting rentals every weekend where there's dogs. And the dogs sometimes are friendly and sometimes they're not. And sometimes they do their business on the property that's being rented and sometimes they don't. And he's talked with the owner and said, you really gotta, you know, take care of this. And the owners said, I'm gonna change the listing so it went not dog friendly, but. He's gone on the website and it still listed as dog friendly. So sometimes the property owners are, you know, they're kind of shooting themselves in the foot. And this is an opportunity for us. To kind of reinforce the idea of responsibility, but at the same time, it also gives an opportunity for butters and a process for butters. To file formal complaints and have their issues and their concerns heard at the same time. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I mean, if it's, if it's noise, parking and trash, we already have ordinances, Vic, cover all that. We have ordinances about dogs too, right?
Yes.
So, I don't know. Any other questions from the members of the board?
Yeah, you know, I'll go one at a time, but I'll let you get in there, Jay. When I was looking through this, it requires a butter notification. I don't think the butters actually need to be notified that somebody wants to do a weekly rental. We don't notify the butters when you're going to build a house. So I come get a building permit. My butters don't get to decide what happens there. For me, I think the logic is if I grant you a permit and then there's issues, then we can address that. But I think you're just opening a can of worms by letting the butters know upfront. Just gives them a reason to come in and complain. How does that change notifying the butters? If I come in and I meet this criteria, you're giving me a license or a permit. Or are you listening to the butters and denying my permit? See, the dilemma is how do you stay neutral there?
Right. And that was, that was one of those discussions we had, fairly lengthy discussion within the subcommittee meeting. In terms of, there's a recognition that probably most butters are not gonna be happy when they find out. That their neighbor is gonna do short term rentals. And so part of the notification to the butters is also going to be an educational piece. You know, we're gonna have a form letter and we're going to inform them of how they would go about filing complaints. If there's a problem in the future. And I think that's part of the, of the, of the solution to the butters feeling that they're powerless. And I better just say no right up front or else I'm gonna have a problem. If they know that there's a set process and that there's a chance for this to be revoked or looked at again or overturned or whatever. That I think that that kind of goes part of the way anyway to alleviating that. The other thing is. We deal with a lot of people at the counter. You've been at the counter on multiple occasions and we've had, had our various customers at the counter. Over time, we kind of gain a little bit of. I don't know, reading between the lines ability where. We always, you know, kind of come to the conclusion sometimes, well, there's more to this story, you know, or this is one side of the story and there's another side of the story, obviously. And the truth is probably somewhere in the middle. But I understand your concern and. I don't think that if an abutter says, no, I don't want it, that that is a reason to, you know, automatically deny. If they have a very good reason, for example. Most of the people who are gonna apply for this are people who are already doing it. If the neighbor has already experienced problems. Over the past several months because of this, that's a legitimate concern on their part. And that's something that we can address with, with the applicant and say, all right, apparently you've had these problems. What are you gonna do to solve these problems?
So if we currently have a list of. Complaints, anonymous complaints, not anonymous, known complaints on file already, then you could turn down my application. But I don't, from what I understand, people aren't coming in and, you know, nobody wants to make a formal report anyway. So why, how are you gonna turn down an application here regardless of what the abutter says? If the butters all come in and say, you know, we've had prom after prom after prom, but there is nothing that's been reported. Is that valid grounds to deny an application?
I, I'm not. Maybe and maybe not. And I know that's not a real good answer and I, you know. I think a lot depends on the circumstances and what exactly is, is the nature of the complaint or the nature of the concern. But you're right.
If you don't have a record of it.
You are absolutely right. We do not have a record. You know, the, the. Few places now, and it is a few places, it's been four or five places that we have had actual complaints on, you know, official complaints. We have dealt with those. We know where those are. And, but we also know that they're on any given week, if you go on Airbnb and type in Laconia, that there's. A couple hundred listings. So it's obviously. Much more widespread than the four or five, you know, places that have been problems. And that's a good thing, you know. If most people are doing this and they're not having problems, then that's a good thing and we want to continue that. So I can't sit here and say that if a butter complains or even a group of butters complain. That that's an automatic reason to deny because I don't think that it is. I think it depends on the nature of the complaints, the nature of the concerns and the nature of. How the property owner responds to that information when we say, your butters have said X and.
Why include them? See, I, again, I understand what you're saying, Dean, I do. And if they're, if I've been running my Airbnb thing, you know, here for the last two years. And no one's ever complained and now I've got to apply and ten butters come in to complain. As far as I'm concerned, there are no complaints. So if I get denied, that creates an issue for me. My butters don't need to know what I'm doing. They really don't. It just, I think, opens up the door to allow people to come in and complain about neighbors they didn't like. Versus, you know, it's sort of like, I think, for me, it's same thing as I apply for a building permit. My neighbors don't get to come and decide what I'm building for a house.
Right.
And whether or not they like it. When it goes up, if they don't like it, they can address it with me or they can move. But, you know, you, I just, I think if now we're gonna include the neighbor's input. Every time I wanna build a house or do something on my property, I think that just opens up a can of worms for me.
I understand you and the thing about this is that. This constitutes a change of use that maybe your neighbors or had not anticipated. If you, if you have a vacant lot or if you have a lot with a building already on it and you wanna do an addition or whatever. The expectation is if it's a single family lot, that it continues to be a single family. Structure. And potentially it may be zoned that you could put a two family or a three family on it. And if it meets all the requirements, then you're right. We don't notify the abutter that that single family house that's next door because it's zoned properly and has all the right spaces. Is now gonna be a two unit or a three unit and you're absolutely right from that standpoint. But, and while we know. Most people do not know what they're allowed to do or not to do in their particular zone. There are certain zones of the city where it's very obvious because of the other buildings that are around you that. Oh, a duplex or a triplex is probably permitted in my neighborhood because there's one there and there's one there and there's one behind me type thing. So you have that expectation that, you know, as long as they're doing something along that line, I'm okay with it. Cause it's what the neighborhood was when I bought into it. But this is a kind of a little bit different situation and. You know. This was part of that discussion and when. You refer, if you refer this to a public hearing and then afterwards the discussion of the board, I think you will hear similar comments from one or two other members of the subcommittee. That they do have some reservations about that. I know that from a. As you know, this started at the city council level, from a city council standpoint, the notification of butters was very important to them. And I'm not going to sit here and tell you that just because it's important to them, that you have to do that or anything. I'm not saying that at all. But I just want you to have all the pieces of the puzzle here.
But it's not in there.
I'm sorry?
It makes reference to the applicant paying the cost of the butter notification, but nowhere in this proposed ordinance. Does it say that notice must be given to a butters? Secondly, the only criteria on which it can be approved or denied are those that are set forth here under subpart M one. So A, B, C, and then the subparts to that. Basically, it's a safety inspection. Nowhere does it say that a butter input could be a possible reason for denying it. So why give notice to the butters? To me, it sounds like we have a little problem, we're gonna make it a big problem. That's what it sounds like. But I also get other problems with the wording, but I guess this probably isn't the time to do that.
I hear you, Chairman, and I appreciate the comments and the concerns. And I know that as this discussion, not just here, but also at the city council level, level has gone on. The emphasis has been on the bad part of short term rentals. And there certainly are good parts to short term rentals. And I'll give you a couple of examples. Over the course of the spring, because word got out in the community and different homeowners associations and condo associations were making their members aware. Of what was happening in the community, we had several applicants from along Weers Boulevard and the various condos. And homeowners association type situations. To do short term rental and they got their administrative approval. And in almost all of these situations, they are, these are second homes. Which used to be, you know, a cottage in a cottage colony or a motel room that's now. They took two motel rooms and made a condo out of it or, you know, whatever they did. And where, you know, for ten or twelve weeks out of the year and maybe other times of the year as well, those were occupied by someone who came up for a week's vacation. And when these units became condominiumized. The owners probably came up every weekend for a couple of months and then it was every other weekend and then it was once a month. And, you know, there's a realization now that I'm, I'm not using that as much as I maybe I thought I would. And from an economic standpoint, from the city's standpoint. They're sitting there empty. And with the short term rental, at least there's an opportunity to put someone into those units. That are gonna contribute to the economy of the, of the area. In terms of they're gonna go to the restaurants, they're gonna do the activities in the area and, and shopping, et cetera, et cetera. And, and so from that standpoint, it's a good thing and I, you know, this is not all bad here, you know, it is a good thing. And, and you know, the, when you talk to the individual property owners, well, it helps me defray my costs, it helps pay my property taxes, it helps, you know, whatever. But, you know, they're also incurring costs, obviously, because they gotta clean after every use, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, there is some, some win-win here, but there's also some negative sides to it as well.
Any other questions?
So, I'm glad you had your.
No, I, I agree with the proposal. I agree with the chair and the vice chair on a notice should not go out. I was, it says suggested administration fee. Is that suggested meaning it gets voted on or is that part of this?
That is the fee that I have suggested. And when it gets to the city council level, I guess you guys, if you want to, I have no objections to you. Chiming in on that suggestion or whether you think it's too high, it's not high enough or it's just right. But that would be, you know, the city council ultimately votes on the fee schedule and it would just be an amendment to the fee schedule that we would add that in. I will tell you that currently an administrative approval is a hundred and twenty-five. So the idea here is that we would create administrative approval slash short term lodging and it would be two hundred and fifty or whatever number.
Yeah, I agree. It should be something because there is work for the.
There's a lot of work, there's a lot of work here.
We should have that. Suggested, I'm not, I'm not sure I like suggested. I think there should be a fee.
Yeah, okay. And there will be a fee, just what that fee will be has, has not been finalized or determined yet.
Got it. Thank you.
Dean, is that a one time fee or is it yearly?
That would be yearly.
Yeah, because the term is for one year.
We had, we had talked. Yeah, we had talked about, it's not in here and, you know, but we had talked about. For renewals, that maybe it would be less because we don't necessarily have to do the inspections again. Or if you go, you know, two years without any complaints, then maybe it's lesser. I don't, there's a lot of different ways you could do that. It gets complicated and it's just one more piece of information you gotta track about every property, you know, as you're doing it. But, so it might be, you know, a lower number every year might be better. I know one of the comments is, you know, a person who's doing short term rentals can make that fee. In either one night or one weekend. And for many of these properties, that is true. But for a lot of properties in the city that are not in the. What, you know, along the shorefront that are, you know, sitting on Pine Street or on. Warren Avenue, Warren Street or, you know, any of those properties where you might not think, why are they doing short term rentals? But, you know, there's a variety of reasons for people to do it. They're not getting those kinds of rates. They're getting more in something like the sixty to a hundred dollars a night range. So therefore it's a different dynamic for them, but. Uh, they're not getting those kinds of rates. They're getting more in something like the sixty to a hundred dollars a night range, so therefore, it's a different dynamic for them, but you know.
And who, who would make the decision to approve or deny? Is it the planning board, or your office?
It would be administratively. Be the, it would be the staff's decision. With a, with an appeal process.
If I wanted to rent a room in my house, would that apply to this?
No. You can have up to three roomers in your house.
Okay, so there's an exception there.
You don't, it does not trigger room and meals?
I don't have to give a butters notice if they decide to.
Doesn't trigger room and meals?
If I wanted to divide my house into two apartments.
Then you would need planning board approval.
Right.
Change of use.
Change of use, right.
Unless it's already in a multi-use mode, right?
And you meet all the requirements, you could do that administratively, yes.
Yeah. I guess what I'm saying is, it, it seems to me like it needs a little bit more thought and discussion. Certainly, if we have a public hearing, that will give the people that um are most hot about this issue an opportunity to come in and explain to us why it should be done, or not. And I'm certainly not opposed to setting it up for a public hearing. I don't know how you folks feel, but
I agree.
I would entertain a motion to, to do that, and get poor Dean off the hot seat here.
I, I just have that one question.
Sure.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
When, when the criteria has to be met, who is gonna police that? The planning board, uh, people, or, in other words, you said there could be hundreds of people out there doing this now?
Yeah.
Okay, if no one's ever complained, how do you know there's hundreds of people out there doing it?
Only.
The advertisements?
Only because we've, we've gone on a couple of the websites, and you're gonna type in Laconia, and this.
And they meet the criteria that they have more than three people living in their house.
Well, some of them do, and some of them don't. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that. We are uh not gonna go on the internet and look at listings, and most of them do not have addresses, you know, on the, on the listing. I mean, we're all familiar enough with the city that we could see the picture of the house and go, oh, I know where that place is, you know, but uh, so that's, that's not the intention. But what, what the plan, uh, the plan is, at some point in time, and, and, and we can discuss this now, or we can discuss it at the next meeting, or we can discuss it at the city council level, but at some point in time, my plan is to send a mailing to every property in the city. Basically informing them of this change, because, uh, and, and, and what the process is, and what it means to them. Because obviously, there are people, particularly people who have second homes, seasonal homes in the city, that they don't read the Daily Sun, they're not on the city website, they don't get the links every Friday afternoon that gets emailed out, and I, and I get all that, and they, they could be uh oblivious to everything that's going on in the city, and, and, and that's true of a number of people, particularly, you know, and hate to be stereotypical, but particularly when it's a second home-type situation, that just may not be aware of, you know, what's going on in the community. They're not here on a regular basis, and so, you know, completely understandable, and I get that. And so, give them an opportunity to know about this, so that, at least, at the very least, they can't sit there, you know, a year from now and say, oh, I didn't know. Well, we, we mailed you a thing, and.
But if people, like you say, have been doing this maybe for a year, two years, or whatever, all of a sudden, read all the criteria that they have to follow, and say, this is gonna cost me three or four thousand dollars to upgrade my house, maybe it's not worth it.
Well, I, I would hope that in most situations, that would not be the case. I would hope that they meet these requirements. We, we've thought very long and hard about what the requirement should be, and, and when we had sat down and discussed with the fire department, believe me, the list was, was much longer and must, more stringent, and then there was a, you know, this is not what we're trying, you know, it's, it's not like a new construction, you know. Uh, I think I've used this example here, if, if your house was built, or a house, not necessarily your house, but a house was built before, let's use nineteen eighty as a cutoff, it probably does not have windows in the bedrooms that meet current life safety codes. Nobody ever thought about that back then, and we're not expecting you to retrofit your house to provide them. What we are asking, though, is, if there's a window in the bedroom, it better open, you know. Whether you can get your behind through it or not is, is, is another, you know, another story, but at the very least, it should be able to be opened, and you would be surprised when we go into some of these other houses for other types of inspections, how many windows are nailed shut, because the ropes are broken, the, in the, in the things, and they don't, you know, they don't stay up.
Spring on it?
Yeah, or, or, or whatever, you know, or they're painted shut, because, you know, you know, five different paintings ago, somebody was sloppy, and you know, so, a- at the very least, the idea is, if you got a window, it, it better well open, and we expect you to have smoke and CO detectors. Your insurance agent would tell you that, you know, he shouldn't need the city to tell you that. If, if you, if you go into a, if you go into one of these long-stay suite-type motels, where they have a kitchenette, fire extinguisher is usually mounted on the wall, it's very visible, looks ugly, but it's very visible, and and, and the, and the idea behind that, and that's a fire code thing, the idea is, if you're rolling into a unit on Friday night for the weekend, and for whatever reason, you have a, you know, kitchen fire, or whatever, if the fire extinguisher's tucked away under the sink, you're not finding it in time of need, you know, or if it's stuck in the pantry closet, or wherever it is. So it has to be mounted on the wall and, and, and visible. I mean, it's, it's just one of those, you know, one of those things. But that's a very minimal expense. Everybody should have smoke and CO detectors anyway, everybody should have a fire extinguisher anyway.
Dean, one quick question for you. Maximum occupancy, explain what that currently is.
Under the fire code, maximum occupancy is two hundred feet per person, two hundred square feet per person. So if you had a fourteen hundred square foot house, you could have seven people in it.
So if I have a six hundred square foot cottage, I can have three people. But I got two kids, so I can't bring them to this one. Even though if I currently own that property, there's plenty of room for my wife, my child, my two children, and myself. But now, we're gonna make it even more restrictive, so you can't, you can't really bring your family.
Well, you can book it on the dark net.
You're not gonna rent it.
But the pro- the problem with that, and why that came up, is that you have a three-bedroom house with a two-car driveway, and it's on one of these sites listing sleeps twenty. And you get someone renting it with twenty people, and it becomes a safety.
I've got a six hundred square foot house that is advertised as sleeping six, because it does sleep comfortably. But I've got a family of eight, really, and they can stay there. Everybody's happy when they go. So we're gonna come along and say, nope, three people, so you can't, so you just, again, I don't wanna limit. I, I want some control, I do. I don't wanna over-control this situation, because what's gonna happen then is, I'm not renting my property. These are friends. Right? Now how are you gonna police it? This, I allowed my friends to go. I'm not even gonna get a permit, because I'm not required to get a permit to allow my friends and family to stay in my house.
And you're right, and you don't, and, and.
We tip, of course.
The cleaning fee's fifteen hundred bucks, but they could stay for free.
Right. So, so the standards are different for you versus if you're in a rental situation, I mean.
And I understand that, but I, again, I.
So the compromise that we reached with the fire department was, we were gonna allow two people regardless of the size of the unit, 'cause some of these cottages along Weers Boulevard that have been converted are
Two hundred square feet?
Two hundred, two hundred, two hundred and fifty square feet, and, you know, and, and, and then once we get, then we'll start counting the two hundreds, and, and, believe me, I grew up in a one thousand square foot ranch, and we had seven people in it, so, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying, and, and everybody lived, and and I'm the product of that, good, bad, or indifferent, but I'm the product of that.
Well, they gotta have these that are four hundred square feet that'll sleep eight.
That's right.
Right, right.
Well, I, you know, I think at this point, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we uh, I think we need to send this to, out for a public hearing, and get the public's input on this.
Is there a second to that motion?
I would second it, yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed?
That's to the September meeting, correct? Please.
Please.
And we may or may not have the historical overlay district back to you for a presentation next month. We'll see how far we get here. We're making progress.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this, Dean. Despite the grilling.
Yes, thank you, Dean, I appreciate it.
Okay, um, we've got some public hearings to take care of this evening. The first one that I see here is designated PL twenty nineteen zero zero nine two SP. It's Entercot Street East. It's a waiver request for a traffic impact study and groundwater analysis. Is the, uh, this application ready for acceptance?
It is, um, but before you before you take any action after the, after the public hearing, before you take any action, you, you need to grant the waivers first, if that's your desire. Otherwise, can't approve, because we won't have, we won't have those informations, but we'll get to that point.
Well, don't we have to do a motion to accept first, the application?
We do. Uh, yes, and so from that standpoint, it's ready to go. Yes, sir.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept application PL twenty nineteen zero zero nine two SP? Just to accept the application.
I move to accept the uh application for the waiver PL two oh one nine dash zero zero nine two SP.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second now.
Seconded by Mr. Moniz. Any discussion? All is in favor? Motion carries. Okay, um. The applicant, I guess we'll hear from the applicant at this point.
Certainly. My name's.
Yep.
My name's Ted Van Sant. I represent New England Solar Garden. This is Ting Chong from Nobus Engineering. I'm just gonna tell a little bit intro about the project. Uh, we've been working on it for a year. We responded to an RFP to lease the land at the landfill. We won the RFP. Uh, we now have an agreement uh to lease the land with the city. We've been working through um approvals with the city and with the state, and um we're looking at covering the landfill with solar panels. There's plans here that Ting will go through, and I think that's that's an intro.
Thank you, Ted. Hi, uh, my name is Ting Chong from Nobus Engineering. Um, good evening, everyone. The project site is located at, on Entercot Street. Um, it's currently, it's a closed capped landfill. It was capped it back in nineteen ninety. It's about sixty acres of land. Um, there is currently two um capped landfill on site. I'm not sure you can see or not where, I try to highlight it in yellow. That's capped landfill. There is about, there's also wetlands abutting the property. What's colored in blue is the existing wetlands. That's to the north and to the east of the property itself. There's also two isolated wetlands on the south, southern border. Uh, what we're proposing here is a four-megawatt AC of solar panel. The solar panel will be sitting um on a concrete top in the plastic basket, so it doesn't drive down to the ground, um, so it's surface mount. For that, and we are proposing four point zero megawatts of it. None of these um panel will be inside of fifty feet of any, fifty feet of the buffer zones. We're proposing, we're proposing the access through steering drive, where there's access easement right now. Coming on the, exist- there's existing, if it were existing gravel access throughout the sites, which we will maintain and keep it as, uh, for maintenance purpose. We are requesting, um, we are requesting two waiver, as mentioned earlier. One is for groundwater analysis. It's currently, the city has monitoring well, series of monitoring wells on sites already, and doing, I believe, monthly record of the checking of the monitoring well. The second waiver we're requesting is the traffic study. We're only anticipating no more than two car coming on site periodically to do grass cutting, maintenance, and stuff like that. So we're requesting traffic analysis for this particular site as well. With that, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, yes.
The only physical road access is Sterling Drive?
Correct.
So you're gonna go up to end of Sterling Drive, where they have the cul-de-sac, and enter it there?
So for the construction purpose, it will come through, um, there is a gravel access through um Entercot, um, instead of coming to the, through the neighborhood, there's existing gravel access drive that we will be proceeding from that angle, and then coming to the end of Colosseum connects to there. So it will be.
Do you mean of Sterling Drive?
It's right here.
It's not Sterling Drive, there you go.
It's like, this is the landfill, here's the steering drive, there's a gravel access through here, that we're gonna, we're gonna use as a construction provision, and connects to here. So there will be not.
So it's not gonna interfere all the people that live on Sterling Drive?
Yeah, let me, let me just point one other thing out. So, uh, as part of the working with Scott Myers and Wes Anderson of the city, and we had, they had hosted um a couple meetings on site with the neighbors to talk about the project. And they talked about it, showed them that there's not gonna be any visibility for the neighbors on Sterling Drive, and the only concern was construction traffic. And the developer was there at the meeting, and he proposed that we use this other gravel access, which is basically his access for the future development, which is not gonna be used for anything right now. So that would be all the construction access there.
So that's the, the area just before Summit Drive? Is that where the dirt road is that you're talking about?
Yeah, Summit Ave, yeah, there is.
Government's blocked off now, I think, with chains or.
So what type of equipment will be going in and out of there all the time? Put these solar panels up?
During construction is mostly um concrete, cement trucks, because there's, as Ting said, these sit on top of the landfills, and it doesn't penetrate the landfill, so you have a plastic cup, you fill it up with concrete, and that's essentially the ballast that holds the panels down. So there'll be a few equipment-delivering trucks with solar panels and a bunch of metal racking, but, uh, you know, most of the traffic would be concrete trucks, and, you know, workers and pickup trucks, which will all be able to park here, to basically get, you know, limit or completely eliminate any uh construction access on Sterling Drive.
After the construction, it will be just pickup truck coming in to mow the lawns, or stuff like that.
What a bit of lawn that are mowed with a little, little tiny lawnmower.
The lawn is actually mowed by the city now, or once or twice a year.
So they'll still maintain it?
Lawn mowing won't be any different now than it would be with.
Before.
So it's still gonna be, no trespassing? How would you go on that site?
They don't have a fence around it, yeah.
You, we will, we are proposing fence going around the panel, um, the perimeter of the panel.
Is this all gonna be within the city of Laconia? Part of the site is in Guilford, I think, isn't it?
It's, it's all Laconia.
How are you connecting to the grid? I'm guessing you have to connect to the grid, right?
Yes.
Power line goes right here, see, it's a light green, so we're just gonna connect by one of those poles. It's me- it's medium voltage, it's not super high voltage, it's medium voltage, so we're able to connect right there. And then right now, the project is in interconnection study with other sources.
Is, is there some sort of a battery collector?
There's no storage at all, and whatever's generated goes out to the grid.
And it does go out towards White Oaks Road?
It just connects to the grid, and it goes where?
Across the field?
It goes more like this way, back to the substation, and uh, I forgot where the substation is.
So who's gonna be the owner-operator of this solar array?
It's an LLC, it's New England Solar Garden Laconia LLC. They would own, own the array, and will sell the energy to what's called an off-taker.
And then, and then the city is leasing the land to, to the LLC?
Correct. Correct.
We have an agreement in place with the city for leasing.
So, so Dean, just one quick question. Isn't there a, a rule of thumb that that property cannot be used after so many years? Is it gone beyond that term? That no structure or building or anything could be in that property?
With the, excuse me. The restrictions would be on the areas that have the cap. Where they're putting the solar array, for the most part, is on top of the cap and they're not, you know, they're not, they're disturbing the ground maybe by a matter of inches in, to just level out these concrete pads. They're not piercing the ground or anything like that. The one little building that they do need to construct is not on top of the cap. It's off to the side of, of the, uh, of the, what used to be the landfill and therefore it's not a capped area. But again, that's just a concrete slab with a, with a, I think it's a ten by ten or something like that structure.
Yeah.
So your arrays don't adjust with the sun, do they? They don't turn?
No, they don't, I don't believe they turn.
They're, they're a function of being stationary, I'm guessing.
So the only way anybody from the public could really see that is coming from Alton Bay and Guilford and looking up that big hill.
For about two seconds.
Yep.
I tried it. And if, you know, there's, um, the other thing is, there is a, uh, one house on Sterling Drive that could see it. And so what we've agreed is, there is already a buffer there of trees.
Right.
We can add another buffer or a fence or some way of...
Is that the yellow house at the top of the hill?
Yeah.
What about the new two houses that are going on top of the hill across the street? They, they can see it too. There's no house there now, but they will.
So we're not...
Again, we, we did have a, a meeting, invited the entire neighborhood. The developer was there, we showed him the plans. Everybody said, you know...
All the, all the solar panels actually on, it's gonna be on the site that's already clear. So we're not clearing any additional woods or anything like that.
Right, it's all field out there.
Exactly.
How long is your construction process, do you think?
Twenty to six months, depending on what time of the year we can get started.
All right, well, thank you. We'll hear from staff now.
I need the public.
Oh, you wanna do the public hearing first?
Yeah.
I always get that wrong. All right, so, um, it's seven twenty-two PM. We are opening the public hearing on this application. Are there any butters here that would like to be heard? Come on up to the mic, please, and identify yourself for the record.
My name is Steve Haynes. I live at six oh four Endercot Street East. It's right across the street from this. We have, uh, part of our property line is Sucker Brook, which feeds from that area. And, uh, at this time of year and later in the summer, the most putrid water is coming out of that as you could believe. There's a magnificent beaver dam just on the other side of the road that backs up into many acres. And it's just, the vegetation is rotting in that and the water's going into the lake. I'm just wondering if this new construction is gonna have a lot of impervious cover that's gonna increase the rate of flow down and just flush all that water into the lake even faster than it's coming now. Has any study been done on that sort of thing?
I think the applicant could refer to that. I saw, um...
Yeah, please.
Yeah, please.
There will be no increase in solar water because what happened is, everything underneath there is still grass. So the, the water will hit the panel. The water will hit the panel and then it will hit the grass and then continue on. So there's no...
A lot of space between the rows as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
It should increase the runoff, I guess, is what you're saying. Let me just ask you, why does the brook stink so bad?
Well, that, it's, God, it must be thirty acres of rotting vegetation that the beavers have pushed the water back into. And, uh, you know, it's just rotting there and...
It's not leakage from the landfill or anything like...
Oh, I don't, I don't, I don't think so. They test the water all the time. But it would be great if someone would remove that beaver dam because that's what's flooding that whole area. And if you ride past there, all the trees have died the last five years from that. Now, the, uh, the trapper's been out there and he's pulled thirteen of them out. And I think they're gone now, but the dam remains.
We must have an ordinance for that or something. State permission.
I couldn't tell you, I can only tell you what I see.
Would that be a dam ordinance?
Yeah, the dam.
Now the dam ordinance, yeah.
It's a magnificent work, I have to tell you. We'd go over in the evening and open it up a little bit and they'd come right back and in ten minutes it'd be fixed up.
Be reserved.
Yeah, they, they work.
That might be historical as well.
Well, thank you, Will.
Thank you, sir.
Ask Public Works about the dam.
Anybody else?
Remember Langley Cove, they talked about a dam up there, breaking news one time?
Yeah, flooded the property. Is that the same one?
No.
No.
Different watershed.
All right, are there any other members of the public that would like to be heard or butters? Please, come on up and...
My name is Attorney Phil Brouillard and I have a series of questions. So some of them will be, need to be answered by you, sir, and some of them will be, need to be answered by the engineer. So if you just wanna keep track. My name is Attorney Phil Brouillard. I represent Jack Marizio and Lori Sabato, who own the property up here in the most northerly corner. And they've asked me to come tonight to ask a few questions about this. And, uh, first of all, uh, they have no problem, uh, with the actual idea of a solar garden there. But, um, basically, um, uh, is Andrew Keller the developer?
He's one of the partners of New England Solar Garden.
Okay. So Andrew Keller of the Seacoast is the principal in that?
Yes.
Okay. What I, what my client would like to know is, is there any transformer or transformer pad anywhere near their property? Which again, is, is right here.
One of the things that we're proposing is... It's probably down here.
Is that the only transformer pad?
We only propose any one.
One? One? Okay. And, and are you going into twelve thousand or thirty-four thousand volts? Your line?
I don't know.
You don't know what the public service line is that you're tapping into, whether it's thirty-four or four?
I don't have that information right now.
Okay. If you don't have the information right now, how have you made the, uh, interconnect arrangements with Eversource?
I didn't do the interaction application.
Who did?
The developer team.
And who's that?
New England Solar Garden developer team.
So did Andrew Keller do that?
Probably. May I ask why that's relevant?
Yes, because I've had, I've had a client in Guilford that had, had dealings with Andrew Keller. And, uh, it's a relevant question. Now, what's the closest inverter bank to my client's property up in the northerly point? In your proposal, you have inverter banks.
Multiple inverters?
I know, they're, they're in these banks. And you've got a picture of it in your proposal. And I wanna know where they're located.
This is the closest piece here.
So where's the property?
Where's the property?
Right here, the hundred fifty-three feet.
Right here? So right here?
Yeah.
Closest panel?
No, I'm not worried about the panels because they don't make noise. I'm worried about the inverters. And I'm worried about the transformers.
Four hundred fifty.
Okay. And how many inverters will be on there? There was a picture in this application and there seemed to be quite a few inverters. How, how many panels do you need for each? How many panels handles one inverter?
I have to calculate. Inverters are a hundred and twenty-five kilowatts each.
So the closest one is like four hundred and fifty feet away from that? Where is it?
Is this on the next?
Somewhere right there? And down here is the closest. Now, in the plans, it said, you referred to the fact that there PVC pipes filled with concrete. But in the plans, it said they were stainless steel tubs filled with concrete. What are they? Okay, 'cause the plans say stainless steel tubs.
There's stainless steel framework that goes into the, to the plastic tubs and then the concrete poured around the stainless steel's post and then...
Well, this plan says stainless steel tub to be filled with cast in-place concrete. See manufacturer's details. Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just reading what it says.
So this particular one, I can have more detail for you. It's actually PVC, HTP.
Okay, so because, so this, 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 this plan isn't right, it should be PVC, not stainless steel. Okay. And is, you have here an inverter mounting example? This is on sheet C dash three point zero. Is that what a typical inverter mounting example looks like?
That's an example of a similar project.
Okay.
But it's not a detail of this particular project.
Okay. Do you plan on using tier one solar panels?
Yes.
So when you transform, are you transforming down to four hundred and eighty volts?
Yes, because the inverter's running four hundred and eighty volts.
Okay. So, and so you don't know right off the top of your head whether you're going into a twelve thousand volt line or a thirty-four thousand volt line? Now, this project is ambitious. It's actually gonna be the largest one in the state. The biggest one is down in Merrimack and it's three thousand megawatts. And it's on the campus of Fidelity that uses all the electricity from the panel. And the next biggest one is up in Moltenboro and it's two point five megawatts. And the state legislature has approved up to five megawatts, but the governor has vetoed it. So right now, the PUC, um, is only reviewing, uh, one megawatt setups for, um, private developers. What's the economic feasibility of this project with one megawatt?
Currently, we're waiting to see what happens with the next potential internal override.
So right now, this, this, this project is not, is, you're, you're asking the board to approve a project that you don't know whether it's feasible or not?
Well, possibly, we, we're looking at several options. We're looking at starting construction of one mega, megawatt, which is, uh, you know, provable right now. We're waiting to see what happens, maybe we can build four megawatts in the middle phases.
Okay.
We're looking at a number of options.
And you're, you're...
At that, you're saying that this is the largest. Several dozen others.
In Massachusetts?
No, no, it, it has to be developed, it has the same...
Not operating, not actually, not operating.
And including up to multiple forty megawatt projects and fifty megawatts in the southeast and west.
And isn't it true that there hasn't been a multiple megawatt pro, project approved as single one megawatt projects by the PUC?
Attorney Brouillard?
Yep.
If I can interrupt your cross-examination.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
For a second. What's the relevance of all these questions to the waiver requests that we're being asked to rule on today?
Absolutely nothing. I, I thought this was the public hearing. I, unless, I'm, I'm extremely sorry, you're absolutely correct. I, I didn't know you were having a public hearing on the waiver request. Otherwise, I would've just sat down and shut up. I really don't have anything to add to that.
No, it's okay.
I have absolutely nothing with their, problems with their waiver requests.
I was really impressed, impressed by your attorney chops there.
Well, no, but I, I'm, no, but, uh, I'm glad you pointed that out because if this is just about waiver requests, I have no problem. But, uh, you know, when this finally, if we get to address this, my client, these are the questions my clients have.
Sure.
And wanted me to ask, so, uh, please, I apologize.
No problem. Thank you, Attorney Brouillard. Are there any other members of the public that would like to be heard regarding these waiver requests? Yes, please, come on up.
Hi, I'm Wendy Haynes and I also reside at six oh four Endercot Street East. And my question is, um, how far back is it sitting from where, where the panels start from Endercot Street East? How much would you say?
Very far. So just to the edge of it in the... A hundred feet, thousand feet from here to there? Just, just to the edge of the property.
Okay.
So Endercot Street is yours over here and then a little bit from it. So this is six fourteen. Or over in here somewhere.
Yeah, you're, you're like way over there.
This is, this is, this is about a thousand feet from here to there. So you're way over there. But we, but where the brook crosses, our property butts the brook. So where does the brook go underneath the tree? So we don't have the brook down. So this is Endercot Street right here.
Okay.
So this is right here. And so this is all wetland. This is all wetlands and we can't build anywhere.
What about here? Is that the trees that the wetlands have been killed down? There, but a lot of them have died. I just wanna know if we're gonna be viewing that out the back of our house when the foliage is gone. Well, Smith Home Cottages is right for us. We're probably right about here. Where's Summit Drive? Right there, there's Summit Avenue. Okay. So where are you gonna access the property from?
So there's an existing access rule? Okay. Doing construction.
All right. Okay, so these trees will not be disturbed?
No, we're not disturbing any trees.
Okay, all right. It's just, but you said that you will be able to view it for a couple of seconds when you're driving from, from Alton that way?
Is that right?
Yeah, I, I, that may be an exaggeration. I, I don't think you can see this from anywhere.
Well, during, during the winter time, there'll be a lot of foliage down, so...
But the landfill exists now, so if you can't see the landfill anywhere, you won't see the solar mountain because they're just, you know, a few feet off the surface of the land.
Okay, thank you. That was...
Thank you, that's a good question, thank you. Are there any other butters or members of the public?
And one more thing, just for fun.
Sure.
For the town of Laconia. We get a tax ratable out of it?
Yeah, we, we're gonna generate lease income from this project, apparently.
Okay, so Eversource gets some power. You guys get some extra tax dollars?
I would imagine that we would get some tax dollars as well as the lease, yeah.
Not you guys, though.
Somebody. Somebody would get. I personally will get none. I think I could speak for the rest of us here. Now you're talking. All right. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the board on these waiver requests? Going once, going twice? All right, seven thirty-nine, we'll close the public hearing. And now, no further ado, I'd like to hear from...
All right, so you wanna talk about just the waivers at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the only thing, it's on the agenda.
No, 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 you're doing the whole proposal as well. But let's do the waivers. The waivers are for the impact, traffic impact study and for the groundwater analysis. As been stated by the applicant and our research that we have done, once the, the solar array is in, in use, generating power, there's one to two vehicles a month. So, uh, we did not feel that that, and the applicant obviously does not want to pay the money for a traffic analysis study for what is commonly one, two, maybe at the most, three vehicles a month.
Right.
Obviously, during construction, it's a different matter and that's true for any project that we would require a traffic study for. We do not... Obviously, during construction, it's a different matter, and that's true for any project that we would require a traffic study for. We do not do traffic studies for construction. We do traffic studies for the eventual use and the intensity of that, of that use. So, in this case, it's, it's one to three vehicles a month. So, we didn't feel that traffic analysis was, was enough, the traffic impact study was necessary. Concerning the groundwater analysis, this is a capped landfill that has been under control of the city and New Hampshire DES for decades. Everybody knows where every cat and nine-tail and mud puddle and everything else on that property is and has known it for quite a while. And we have a number of monitoring wells on the property already, which will continue to be monitored by the same people that are monitoring them now. So, we, given all that, we, and, and the fact that this project is really not digging into the ground or changing terrain or anything like that, we did not feel that a groundwater analysis was necessary or appropriate for that. So, that's the request for the two waivers.
The project as a whole, if we're voting on-
And then as-
The project as a whole, I probably should reopen the public hearing.
Yes, I would suggest that you reopen the public hearing for, and I'm sorry if I miscommunicated, but my intention was, obviously, if you don't wanna grant the waivers, you can't grant approval tonight, because we don't have all the information before us. But if you do grant the waivers, then you could grant approval for the entire project. And I, if I was unclear in that, I apologize.
That's all right.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Dean, where, they said they're gonna access heavy-duty concrete trucks up that dirt road, which is the backside of Sterling Drive.
Yes.
They're not going into Sterling Drive and ruining that hot top.
Correct.
What about the field if it's, if it's during a wetlands, wet area? Think they're gonna ruin the field with those heavy trucks?
The, my understanding, and I, and the applicant will have to clarify this, I think, but my understanding is that the construction vehicles would use the existing dirt roads that are already there, and they basically skirt the cap area. And I don't know how you get the concrete from the truck to the bins. You'll have to enlighten us on that. They do a pump.
They actually use little buggies.
So, you're gonna use bu-
Oh, so you, there's buggies, little buggies.
So, you're not gonna drive those heavy trucks across that field?
Correct, across the landfill, correct. Only on that access road, and it's not determined whether they're actually gonna go all the way in on the access road or part of the way in, but it would only be on the existing access road, which is gravel, that the trucks go on all the time.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, Attorney Bruyad wasn't in the room at the time, but I believe that the chair made an error in cutting him off, because we are indeed being asked to render an approval on the project tonight. So, if you would like to resume, I will reopen the public hearing at seven forty-three? Sure.
I'm sorry, the mayor.
Sure.
I was understanding if the TRC, that the, the waivers had to be approved first, and then you open up to be able to discuss it, but I have no idea, so I'm just bringing that up about the process.
Were, were you under the impression that you were going to get approval for this project tonight from the planning board?
Yes, but we are, but we were under the impression that the waivers had to be approved first, so that, once the waivers are approved, then the whole project can be approved. So, it's a sort of two-step process.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
All right. So, should I sit back down so you can vote?
Yeah, no, didn't we already vote?
No, they've not.
Did you vote on the waivers yet?
We haven't voted on the waivers yet.
Oh, I thought I made the motion to approve the waiver.
You didn't, but you- Well, you might have, but we, and-
I will, okay. I make, I make a motion that we accept the waiver, P L two oh one nine Z S zero zero nine two S P, to move forward to, for approval tonight and accept the waiver of the, the, the traffic study and groundwater analysis. Your motion by Sprott Nivens in a, a second. Are there any, is there any other discussion regarding the waivers? This is just on the waivers. Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? All right, so the waivers are approved. And now, again, I'll reopen the public hearing now at seven forty-five. If Attorney Bruyad would like to continue with his questions regarding the-
Well, I, I hope the members of the board can remember what I've already brought up, but those are my major concerns and, and, but- Take a moment to-
That's all right.
Recover, I mean, to make sure I covered what I wanted to do. They've answered a lot of questions.
Can you explain to me the significance of the voltage? Is it, are you concerned about noise from the transformers? Is that what it is?
Yes, and, and they've really kind of answered that, because inverters themselves don't make a lot of noise, but they, the, like, if you go out to that, that, that big green box out there, it, it kinda hums. And that is like one-eighth of the size of what they're gonna need, so you can imagine, if you hear that hum. My clients just were concerned about where it was, and since it's so far away, it's, it's irrelevant, yeah.
One other thing, which will help you, is that the landfill hump is sort of between them and where these will be.
Okay, that whole hump of earth will-
The whole hump is, is gonna protect
Fine.
All, all these folks from hearing any noise from that transformer, which we tuck down on the other side of the hump of the landfill.
You did say earlier that it was gonna be some type of fence around. What type of fence?
Chain link fence.
Chain link, so that-
That's not gonna-
It's not gonna do anything for noise.
And, and, and the amount of the voltage affects the interconnect and how easy it is for them to dump into a certain, 'cause they're, they're gonna have a lot, they're gonna have four hundred and eighty volts. So, four hundred and eighty volts into twelve thousand volts, and then four hundred and eighty volts into thirty-four thousand volts. It, it's kind of irrelevant anyway, but sometimes, public service or Eversource requires their equipment to be updated if, if they're, they're putting too much power onto the grid in that particular spot. And as far as my question about the legislature and the kilowatts, you're just gonna play that by ear, pretty much?
Well, we're still in the process of getting a, a number of approvals.
Okay.
So, at this point, we don't have to make any decisions, but if there are some pending-
Well, I, the, the point that I wanted the board to, to make is, right now, the, it's, there's a one million, mega, one megawatt limit right now. How about DES?
We are submitted with AOT and also with the Solid Waste Bureau.
And so, you've gotta get DES's approval to put something on top of the landfill? And then you need a, an alteration of terrain permit?
We're submitted a few weeks ago, still in being reviewed.
And how about wetlands? Are you far enough away from the brook that you don't need one? Okay. Now, do you estimate construction cost to be between four and eight million dollars?
I don't, don't know why that's relevant.
I just asked a question. If you wanna tell me it's not relevant, you can tell me that, but I, I'm asking you a question. Is that-
I, I don't know what the construction costs are.
And there's no storage, you said? Okay, thank you, members of the board. I'm, I'm sorry for that disjointed-
Phil, let me ask a question, please. Is, uh, this, you seem to have previous dealings with Kelly. Was there a problem with the solar array that has been built by him previously, in a different location?
Not to my knowledge.
You seem to have something up your sleeve or you got a skeleton in the closet about that.
Well, I have my own personal opinion based on how a project with him went before, but I don't really think that my personal opinion counts. And I was representing somebody and they, go ahead. Oh, I thought you were. And, and so I just wanted to make sure that it was him and not someone else.
Very good, sir.
And I'm sorry for the unresponsiveness of that answer, but I really can't, I don't wanna disparage anybody's reputation or say anything.
No, that's, that's fine. I just thought that, you know, that there was a problem with a previous project.
Is there anything we should know, based on your knowledge of his prior dealings?
I mean, that's relevant to our decision. If the answer's no, that's fine.
There's nothing that's relevant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Attorney Bruyad. Are there any other members of the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, come on up.
I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
Don't be sorry. Come on up.
This is called due process. It's a wonderful thing.
Wendy Haynes from six oh four Endicott Street East. And now I forgot what I was gonna ask. My concern still is that of the runoff, I have not walked the property, 'cause you're not supposed to be up there, but is it, it's high, it's elevation?
It's high. The elevation is high. We did the stormwater, there, before I go in there, there's a lot of stormwater control already on sites that's already happening. There is swell along, so it doesn't she flow anywhere. That's control. We did analysis. And we also discussed with the town engineer. We are in the same vote that there is no increase based on this, this proposal.
I, I just, just thinking, with all these solar panels, if you get to do the full project, I, I understand that they're elevated above, but you're still disturbing ground to get the posts in for each and every solar panel, correct?
There is a top underneath it.
Okay, so, there's a lot of those going into the ground. I'm just still concerned about the-
I'm gonna help you a little bit, Wendy.
Okay.
That's what they look like.
Okay, so-
Sorry, I don't know what I'm supposed to do that when you look like.
No, that's fine.
He's intelligent.
Okay.
So, that's what you're gonna say. Oh, that's what you went theme for that.
Okay, but-
That's not disturbing the ground. It's sitting on the ground.
These don't go into the ground at all?
That's not the proposal, no.
Okay, all right.
That's the ground we're calling up.
Okay, but I, but still, the panels itself, it's still, you're gonna have a lot of runoff that would normally go underneath each, each and every solar panel, because you've got grass there, but now it's-
So, what happens is, then this is the solar panel. So, you have, normally, the water will go, solar panels, the water is getting this way.
Correct.
So, when there's water panel, solar panel, you hit this way. Run down and go into the grass.
But, but you're putting a lot of water in a very small amount of grass as opposed to the whole amount of grass where the solar panel didn't be-
There's nothing underneath the grass. The grass is continuous.
I understand that until it gets to the next solar panel.
There's like twenty feet of rain drop.
But you're still taking up ground where it's still laying over top of ground where it can't seep in, each and every solar.
Solar, yeah, correct.
Team has shown this to the city engineer who worked for Wes Anderson and the, the town, the company engineer, who are concerned. They've studied that, she's approved it, and she's discussed it with the Department of Environmental Services at the state. And they've approved numerous other landfill solar projects just like this. So, there's a lot of focus on it at the state right now, and so that's what they're, they're, part of what they're looking at right now.
But, but that's also running into the wetlands, which then runs into Sucker Brook, which brings disgusting water into Lake Winnipesaukee. That's my concern.
That's not relevant to the solar project. That's the, that's the landfill that's the problem.
Well, but it's all part of the land, though.
Ma'am, ma'am, can we, can we just, if, if, I would rather that you not engage in a, an argument with the applicant.
Oh, I'm not arguing. I just wanna understand it.
I think what you need to understand is that the applicant is telling us, and the plans here that we have before us, that there is no increased runoff from the site as a result of this project. And that's a standard, that's pretty standard for most things that come before this board for approval. We expect you to take care of it. In this, in this particular case, they're, they're operating on a site that contains a capped landfill, which means it's already got runoff controls. It's already got surface interceptors like swales and things like that. It should not, even with the pads on the ground, increase discharge off the property in any way. That's my understanding of what they're presenting to us tonight.
But the wetlands are part of that property, which then runs into Sucker Brook. I don't know how far up Sucker Brook goes. Can anybody-
There's no wetlands in the project itself, and they're, they're outside the, the buffer, is my understanding.
But it's coming down a hill into the wetlands, correct?
It is right now, before they built this. Whatever's happening right now will probably continue.
If you wanna look, here's the thing they did. They look-
Same amount of water.
I'm just trying to understand it.
They, they look at the past ten years, the maximum storm event that has happened
Okay.
over this area, and depending on the materi, the surface material, they run different models, and each kind of surface material gets a runoff coefficient, which means that material allows a certain amount of the water to drain through it and a certain amount to runoff of it. And that's also takes into account the slope of that material. So, in the end effect, you have the same surface area that you always have. So, it's receiving the same amount of rain in that area. And with the space in between those solar panel banks, it allows the rain to either runoff as it does now or to seep in. But you have the same rain on the same area, and it would be different if that was one continuous, continuous solar panel running all the way down to the end, because then you have all that water in one spot. But basically, they're diverting it, but allowing it to still hit that surface area and either drain off or soak in, infiltrate.
Because I just know from living across the street, when there's heavy rains, you know, there's a lot of runoff into that road.
It's not gonna be worse, but it probably won't be better either.
Okay, all right. That's for another meeting, I think.
Your best bet is to, is to work on the Beaver problem.
And that's a state issue.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other butters or members of the public that would like to be heard regarding this application? Sensing none, we will close the public hearing again at seven fifty-eight P M. All right, we've heard from the staff. Are there any other questions for staff? What would you like to do?
I'd like to ask some questions. Is that okay?
Sure.
I believe that the applicant's application is incomplete. I believe the height of the panel should be shown. I believe the size of the pads for the transformer should be shown. I believe the piping should, for the transformers and the inverter should be shown. And I believe that the locations for the connections should be shown. That's what I believe personally.
I think we already decided that the application was complete, did we not?
It, it's potentially complete, but none of those items are shown, and I believe there's digging for those, and I, I believe that there's pads required, which requires digging. Especially for the transformer. I mean, it's not gonna sit on the ground. I know this for a fact, as I put him in all the time.
So, your objection is that the plans are not accurate?
That's correct. Well, I'm saying that they're not complete. I think that the, the rays are accurate. I just don't see any of the connection pieces to the plans that are shown.
Okay.
Or the locations of.
What would staff say about that?
If, if, if the board would like the plans to be updated to show that, then you certainly, it's in your prerogative to require that.
We could do it as a condition of the approval, could we not?
You could do it that way, if you're not looking to approve them yourself. Or you could ask for the plans to be updated and, so that you can review them yourself and then vote for approval. Either way is-
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, Jay, would this information be dispositive to you as far as making your decision?
It, it potentially would change the position of, we're not digging on the property. And that's one of my concerns. I mean, we, we've gone so far as to put items on the ground, to put the panels up, but there's no height of the panel, so you can't tell if you're gonna see it or not. I believe the panels are gonna be at least seven to ten feet off of that structure, which potentially could be seen, but I'm not sure. We don't have- We don't have a line of sight drawing. The second thing is, to put a, a transformer on, to change from four eighty to either twelve KV or thirty-four five KV, whatever you're doing, requires a big transformer that's very heavy. So you're going to have to pour a pad for that. It's not gonna go on those items that hold up the panels. And for me, that means disturbing the ground.
Yeah, there is pad showing on the drawing.
I don't see pads. Did I miss them? Maybe I did.
There is a, um-
And I have the drawings right here, but I, if you can show me those, maybe I, would help me determine that I'm okay.
Absolutely.
Right.
So, may I approach you?
Yeah.
They all see two point ones. So here's the two parking space we added, and then there's the trans, there's ten by ten equipment pad right there.
So there's one transformer for the, for, for megawatt?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Then I stand corrected, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, well, you can remain seated.
You don't have to leave.
Yeah, you're fine. Were there, okay, so the plan does show-
It shows a transformer.
The pad at least, alright.
Yes, I didn't see it.
Were there any other questions before we got to a vote? Alright.
I just have one quick question. It's really, it's in regards to the vote. It, it says, is it the same number for both approvals? It says application? Okay, so it's the same number.
Yep.
You mean the PL twenty nineteen zero zero, okay.
Yeah, there is. I was looking to see if there was another one for-
No.
For the actual approval.
Okay, so the waiver requests are in. Does anyone wanna make a motion regarding approval?
I will make the motion.
Alright.
That we approve PL twenty nineteen dash zero zero nine two SP for a solar garden on city property. I don't see any restrictions. I think, I think it's a good idea, a good use of unused land.
I second it.
So this standard-
That includes the staff recommendations. Mike?
Included. Did you intend to include the staff recommendations?
Yes.
For conditions, okay. Alright, uh, motion as amended. Any discussion?
We also are adding any sort of, uh, I know you talked about putting some, um, trees or whatever to potentially cover any of the panels that could be seen. Is that part of the motion?
I didn't hear the applicant say they were planning on planting.
They, they did say that they, they-
For the one neighbor, if they have a line of sight to the panels, he said he would add some trees there.
Okay, so you wanna add that to the conditions?
I would like to add that to conditions if we can.
Alright, um-
So landscaping plan reviewed with, uh, staff?
Please, thank you.
That sounds reasonable.
Yes, okay. So we folded that into the motion. Is there anything else that we need to do?
It would be item two C, just for-
That's what I was looking for, two, so you can add it as a new item, okay. Right, so that's a condition to be completed prior to the start of the sign, site work.
Correct.
Is that acceptable to the applicant?
I was looking at the plan. Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. Would you explain what you're-
Absolutely. What, what we're asking for is for you to put a height on the panels, do a line of sight, if there's any sort of potential for the neighboring folks to see it, to add some buffering so they can't see it. And you did talk about that initially, but you didn't specifically say that.
I think we talked about adding some tree in.
Right, wherever that is.
Yes.
So you, you're okay doing it. I know you said it already. I'm just gonna make it part of the conditions of the approval, if you don't, if you're okay with that.
So it'll be two C.
So one other little quick question with Dean and the applicant.
Do we wanna be specific? It's line of sight from that corner?
Yeah, from the north.
Well, an, any, any of butters, not just one location. What if that yellow house complains that he can see all that stuff, and he's objected to it? You said, that's the only house that they can see it?
Yeah.
That's, that's the only house.
That's the house, that's the corner house that they're talking about?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Point being is, we're gonna do a, add to the drawing or a line of sight. We only wanna do it there. We don't wanna do it all the way around.
Right, yeah.
You can't possibly see anything from all the way around.
Yeah, and like I said, in the future, anybody's gonna build a house up on top of the hill. What did they know before they bought it, before, that they don't know now?
So that's the northwest corner, or northeast corner?
Northwest corner.
Northwest.
Northwest corner.
So the second question I have is to Dean and yourself, in regards to the limitations of what you can build there if it's not approved by the governor or governor's council. Is there any reneg, on the contract with this city, that once they start and they can't go on any further, as far as this is what we're approving, a four meg and not a one?
That's not our, that's not our purview, though. Any, any of the terms of lease or contractual relationship between the city and the, and in this particular applicant would be for the city council. That's not our jurisdiction.
But we're approving a four-
Four meg and they can only go one.
Four meg thing, and they, they said they can only build a one meg. Well-
Well, they might only be able to, but it, it could be a phased approach, correct? And that was something that-
Currently, they would be limited to one megawatt.
Right.
The legislature has passed, uh, if I remember correctly, with a veto-proofed number, both side, both chambers, legislation that would allow up to five. Governor has vetoed that, and when the legislature gets around to dealing with vetoes, then that will be one of the subjects that they will take up. If, if in the end game, they can only do one megawatt, obviously the, the city is going to, it, it will change the terms with the city.
Right.
And it also may be the situation where it is not economically feasible for them to do the project, and it, but it may still be. And I, I don't know the answer to that. And, and that would be worked out in the, you know, the provisions of the contract.
Right now, we're voting on a max of four.
Correct.
They can't go any higher.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, that's my understanding. Any other questions? Oh, we have motion in a second, so all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Project is approved, subject to the conditions that we've stated.
Thank you.
Alright, so let's move along. PL twenty nineteen zero zero nine four SU, sixty-seven Fox Crossing, uh, at seven Abury Lane.
We need to accept it, or is it?
And a boundary line adjustment.
Yes.
So we need a motion to, is the, is the application-
We're to accept it.
In, in order?
Need to accept it.
You need to accept it, yes. It's ready to go.
So can I have a motion to accept the application?
I make a motion that we accept the application, PL two oh one nine dash zero zero nine four SU, um, for a line adjustment.
Motion by Mr. Broden. Anyone else?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Yeah, it's a second by Mr. Forster. Are there any, is there any discussion on the motion? Sensing none. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? Okay, the application has been accepted. We will now hear from the applicant.
Good evening. Fred Clausen, sixty-seven Fox Crossing Lane, and my next door neighbor, Eric Foster from seven Abury. I was elected to do the speaking. You have the information from Frank Kirke, he's the surveyor, uh, in front of you. I decided to do a color diagram. I hope you can see it from there. I don't have a big one to pin up. My house, this is in the Oakley section of Long Bay, and my house is in the green. Eric's Foster's house is in the yellow, excuse me, the, uh, pink. And the vacant lot that Eric owns is the yellow. That's what exists now, and we are looking, looking to end up with that. Discontinue Eric's line straight down to the road of Abury, and my line straight down to the road of Abury. And discontinue the water on the property, and discontinue, it will no longer be a building lot.
Hold the two up.
Sure, I'm sorry.
That one's upside down, sir.
Yeah, it's, oh. I tried to do it so it would match up with the, the way you have the plan.
Very interesting.
So we're, we're discontinuing a building lot in the Oakley section of, uh, Long Bay.
So you're converting three lots into two?
Correct. And a nice line split, straight, it's all been surveyed and-
No solar panels, none of that?
No solar panels. Eric, no solar panels?
Okay. Um, alright, any questions for the applicant?
So the Ds will be just two Ds now, not three?
Yes, yep.
Alright.
Total discontinuance of everything to do with the yellow.
And is there any objection to the development?
It's been approved. No, it's been approved by Oakley, and it's been approved by Long Bay.
Okay.
You can put your arms down. Thank you. So, alright, we'll open the public hearing at eight eleven. Yeah. Are there any butters here that would like to be heard regarding this boundary line adjustment? Any members of the public? Sensing none, we'll close the public hearing at eight eleven and a half. What's the board's pleasure on this? Well, staff, is everything alright?
Uh, we, we recommend approval of this. Uh, you have our recommendations. Uh, there's nothing unusual about this at all. It's ready to go and, and is consistent with, uh, the neighborhood.
Okay, so staff recommends it. What's the pleasure of the board?
Aye. I'll make a motion that we approve PL twenty nineteen dash zero zero nine four SU, sixty-seven Fox Crossing, and seven Abury Lane. MBL two thirty-one dash three six four dash seven, a boundary line adjustment.
Motion?
To include any requirements by the, required by the, uh, staff.
Staff recommendations, we'll call that. Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Martinez, a second by Mr. Martinez. Is there any discussion on this motion? There being none, all those in favor, opposed?
You did an excellent job, both as a spokesperson and a bulletin board.
Thank you very much.
Nice colors. Good job.
Yeah, it really was. It was easy, even for me to see.
For us to see. It's great.
The upside down part, Mike, you caught that. That was good.
I couldn't quite figure it out, but the colors were so in-
People in the back had a crane. They sat in the color.
Wonderful. Alright, so, uh, PL twenty nineteen zero zero nine three SU, otherwise known as sixty-seven and seventy-nine Maiden Lady Cove Lane, another boundary line adjustment, is this application ready for acceptance?
It is.
Would anyone care to make a motion to accept this application?
I make a motion that we accept PL two oh one nine dash zero zero nine three SU with a property line adjustment to merging Layton, uh, plan. And where's the other, uh, Leonard, not Leonard, one oh five, four oh three dash one, two, one oh five, two, four oh three dash two, in Laconia.
Okay, so was there a second to that?
I second it.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor? Application's been accepted. We will now hear from the applicant.
I'm Lynn Layton, and the other Layton and Leonard are back there.
Aye.
I didn't color mine, though.
Oh, you should have colored it.
Lady marker.
I know.
That's what you were doing back there, coloring.
Realize now you'll have to sing or dance.
Yeah, right. Oh, I, whatever. Approval, I'll sing and dance.
I vote on the dancing.
See, there you go.
So we're merging, and it happens to be sixty-seven and seventy-nine, which was just sixty-seven, so, um, yep, so those two, uh, so we're gonna make three, two.
Right.
Still.
Three lots into two lots.
Yep.
Alright.
And it goes like this. So the Leonard's are here, and we're here, and then, um, this lot, and we're just gonna split it right in half.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yep, and I do have a letter, um, from Carl Johnson, an original, that just says that, um, that he certified that he has set the appropriate boundary markers as indicated on the proposed plan, and the revised plan in mile hour will reflect this as well, as any changes the board may require during this approval process. I don't know who. Does someone want this original? Okay.
Okay.
Are there, I don't. Are there any questions for the applicant? Right?
So it looks, uh, it looks like the red lines are where they're gonna finally be, and the dotted lines are where they are now. You're actually taking that to center core and dividing it in half?
Right, yeah, dividing it in half. Mm-hmm.
Nice.
Yeah, it looks like the house is illegally close to the boundary line.
It's, yeah, it's actually gonna be more conforming at this point.
You're discontinuing that, yeah. You're going the right way.
Yep.
Instead of trying to make green.
See, now there's another plus, yeah.
There is.
Increasing conformity is always the planning board's goal.
You didn't even have to color it. We could see the dotted line.
I know. Yep, there you go.
Very nicely done.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll, oh, open the public hearing, and at, what are we doing here? Can't see it, but that, those glasses. Eight sixteen. Are there any butters here on this prop, boundary line adjustment? Any members of the public? Alright, sensing none, we'll close the public hearing at eight sixteen. Um, what's the pleasure of the board? Oh, staff.
Uh, this is very similar to the previous application. We're going from three lots to two. Um, pretty straightforward, and there's no objections here.
Alright.
We do have a list of recommendations.
Yes, the staff recommendations. Someone care to make a motion?
Not me. I'll make the motion. Uh, I make a motion that we accept this application, uh, PL two oh one nine dash zero zero nine three SU for a lot line adjustment. Guess it's one oh five dash four oh three dash one, and one oh five slash four oh three dash two slash one. Three lots into two lots.
And do you-
And all the, uh, recommendations are to be included by, from the staff.
Very good. Staff recommendations. Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Second by Mr. Martinez. Are there any, is there any discussion?
No discussion.
No.
Alright. Alright, well, sensing no discussion, all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed?
Dang, no.
Alright, well, there you go.
Alright.
Three lots have been made into two magically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for not making her sing.
I know. Perhaps I'm a better dancer.
Maybe, maybe next time it'll be you.
Oh, no, he, oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no, we're not gonna do that. Well, we saved the best for last, I think, didn't we?
Yeah.
We had to sit through a whole meeting.
We're at PL twenty nineteen zero zero eight nine CUP, um, and that's the six fifty-one Union Avenue, formerly Hughes Automotive. And, um, we need, uh, is the application in a suitable condition to be accepted?
Yes.
Alright, so we do, before you begin, we need a motion to accept the application.
I make a motion that we accept PL two oh one nine dash zero zero eight nine CUP Child Care, and PL two oh one nine dash zero zero nine zero SP. Two, uh, different, uh, usage.
Thanks. Alright, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, motion by Mr. Broden, second by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Alright, so the application has been approved, and, or accepted, rather, and now we'll hear from the applicant.
Okay, you'll be speaking. I'm the one that talks a lot. Um, what we're doing is we close Hughes Automotive, and, um, we wanna bring, um, a childcare center over there at the bottom, um, we have, um, in there, and to grow it. Um, I have a waiting list a mile long, and I wanna make it so that, um, the existing childcare center, which is right next door, um, becomes infant center. And then we have ages three to five in this building, uh, for childcare. Um, there's a need for infants in the area, a big need, this waiting list, people on-
There's a need for infants in the area, a big need, this waiting list. People aren't able to go to work because it's not childcare. So I thought it'd be in the best interest for us to make a business decision to grow it and move and we had to close the shop due to health reasons. And that's what we wanna do.
Just coincidentally, about two weeks ago, my wife needed her car inspected and I said, we got Hughes Automotive, it's right down the street, you know, because we live in Lakeport Square. And then she said, it's permanently closed. She checked it out.
A lot of people were pretty upset, yeah. But, yeah, it was a decision after a lot of years, but he had to, health-wise, stop turning wrenches.
And I couldn't notify everybody because I had forty eight hundred.
You know, a real hard job is daycare, right? You know that.
Oh, yeah, I'm just gonna do the maintenance.
He's gonna be my partner, do the books and the maintenance and I deal with the state childcare licensing.
So that's a lot of square feet, right? I mean, how many square feet are you adding?
We're not adding. It's just changing the bottom floor.
What I mean is to the business.
Oh, to the business. Yeah, it is. It's good.
Fourteen hundred thirty, huh?
Yeah, it's thirty five feet.
High ceiling in there.
Well, the ceiling in the middle, we are gonna put a ceiling up to save on heat and stuff.
Yeah, it's not gonna be as high.
What about the big doors, the bays and all that?
We're taking the bays out. Actually, we have a.
The lifts might be fun. The kids would like them.
Yeah, I just wanna give this to you so you can just pass out. I should have made, it's just kind of a picture drawn up by the.
Another one if you. They want to. I meant to make all six of them, all right. So the doors basically will be coming out and doors and windows, regular doors and windows.
We had, yeah, we had Charlie come from the fire department, told us where the egresses should be.
What about landscaping in the yard and all that and the parking?
Yeah, we got plenty of.
Pick up and drop off. You can just go through the yard, right?
Yep.
Exactly.
Make it easy on the parents.
Actually, we have more parking than what's required.
All right.
Did you mention that your business is expanding for childcare?
Yes.
That's great, actually.
Yeah, it's needed.
Oh, I see, okay. So you could have a big space for like recreation inside too, couldn't you?
Yep.
Yeah, on the way in.
First bay on the south end?
Yeah, we're gonna kinda use that as an indoor place for them, like during the winter months or rainy days.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep.
Trampolines, dodgeball.
No, 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 no trampolines.
Bouncy house, laser tag, wear a bouncy house. You could put a bouncy house in a parking lot.
So on the drawing that you just passed out, is that section where it shows the bathrooms your existing daycare?
No, that's the six fifty one Union Ave, the existing daycare is six forty five Union.
Yeah, it's two separate buildings.
It's two separate buildings.
Oh, you're not putting two buildings together?
No.
Alls we're doing is taking the garage doors out and then.
They're gonna keep the babies in the, in the house next door.
Yes.
Move the older kids.
Any, any of them that have diapers will stay at six forty five. Then at once they're out of diapers.
There's a reason for that with the state.
Two elderly kids.
It's a lot of diapers. Yeah.
So nothing else to be in the building, just daycare?
No, we live upstairs. Yeah.
You live upstairs in the house part, right?
No, in the building.
No, in the building.
In this building, six fifty one? Oh, all right.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So in this drawing, it shows the three sections.
Yep.
Small one to the right, that's gonna be a play area.
Yep.
Center's gonna be daycare.
Yep.
The left is gonna be just vacant for now?
No, that's gonna be daycare too.
That's gonna be, it's actually gonna be like, there's gonna be a parent seating area and then there's gonna be the director's office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's gonna be nice.
Jay, you had a question?
Is there any sort of product, oil, oil collection or anything from the automotive that you have to take out to do this?
No, no, I had a waste oil furnace and I sold that, so we burned all our waste oil and I had a company come and get all the waste antifreeze.
Everything's out.
I always kept them in fifty five gallon drums. They always came and pumped it out.
It was fairly easy. That's great.
Yeah.
It's good.
He was pretty picky.
So how many, how many kids are gonna attend this part of the school?
I don't know, but. It depends on, it's up to the fire department, the state childcare licensing. No, I have three toilets. Actually, there's, there's four.
The drawing only shows two.
Yeah, but they didn't show, that's why we changed the drawing. I sent it in tonight, over to the, I don't know if I can come over there. This is an existing bathroom right here, so I told him he needed to change it because we gotta blow this up for the.
Right, right, right.
There's already a bathroom here, so that'll take care of this area. And then there's two toilets here for this area.
And the childcare licensing requires one toilet, one toilet per every twenty children.
Right, I knew there were a lot of licenses.
That's why I asked you if you were having more than forty people.
How many children are you licensed for right now?
Forty five.
And you probably easily double that by adding this.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'll probably, I don't wanna go over fifty because then it becomes a whole different with the fire department and the state in Hampshire, so I think it's gonna be no more than fifty. And also with cooking, you'll have to put in a commercial kitchen and it goes, just goes on with over fifty.
Yep, understood.
Okay, are there any other questions?
I assume you're gonna add some playground area outside and.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah, that's all on the plans too.
Yep, absolutely, a nice big playground.
We already bought the, I don't know if you drive by there, Mike.
We have all the equipment.
Got all the equipment on it for the playground.
Yep.
That used to be the King Kong car wash.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Goodness.
Matter of fact, the last base still has the water thing that goes around.
Oh, that's really?
Everything else is torn down anew.
On the north end of the building.
Right.
With, and they had a catwalk, so you could go up on.
Yeah, yeah, we still have that.
I still have one piece of it.
Yeah, this, we have that little piece up there, but I wanna keep that. No, I wanna keep that, that's.
I'm sorry, these guys are neighbors, so it's like. You know, memory Spear Brothers was in the back, they had all the cranes.
The mother is.
I used to walk home through that area and there was always something fascinating. I remember.
That was four lots, I think, at once.
A big collection of crunched up cars in the back of Irwins too.
Yep.
But anyway, all right. We'll open the public hearing then, I guess, at six, at eight twenty seven PM. Are there any members of the public here?
Nope.
There are none at all, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. The assumption that there are no invisible residents here. And we'll hear from staff.
We're recommending approval. We have some conditions for you to consider. This will go, because of the nature of what they're doing, they will need a building permit, so this will go through that process with the code department. And obviously, they still need to get permits from the state level for the actual business levels and that's a.
Human services does that?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, are you saying that just with childcare licensing coming in and doing the proof, is that what you meant?
Yeah, they gotta come in and do this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can't get licensed unless they do and they can't come in until the fire department and health department comes in first. I have to have all that checklist stuff for them to come in.
Yep.
Yeah, this, and it's worse.
That's your work cut out for you.
But I've done it, I've done it, so. Yeah, I've done it twice.
That's right.
From Guilford, yeah.
All right.
I don't see anything in the, in the recommendations and everything from the, that's why I asked you how many kids are gonna be there versus what I saw for toilets in there.
Oh, okay.
So are you required to put a water fountain in there because it's public?
No.
No? You're the only ones?
Water fountain?
Yeah, drinking water.
No.
No? Okay.
I mean, I have, we have a bubbler like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we, we do have, yeah, I mean, at the other center, we have a water bubbler for the kids if they get thirsty during the day. But we're not required to, but we put it in. We got a scholarship that actually gave us one.
I have a question for staff in the, under site plan regulation compliance review. The sentence, cooking facilities, comma, other than residential equipment used for the warming of foods shall be protected. What does that mean?
They have residents upstairs, so those will be under the residential requirements. If they are going to put in some type of kitchen to prepare food for the, for the, for the childcare, which they've indicated they're not going to do that, then they, then the fire department will require, you know, one of those over the hood suppression.
Put in a suppression system and all that, right?
That's, that's fifty, only if it's fifty kids and over.
That's a lot of money, a commercial kitchen like.
Yeah, I can't. We're sticking.
Check the auction sites, though, honestly. You can get equipment real cheap.
I mean, I have a kitchen at the other place and in Lakes Region, they cook in one location and just or, or do, you know, lunches, sandwiches and it's, you know. It can get too complicated that way.
That's true.
Yeah.
All right, so any other comments from staff? All right, I would entertain a motion on this one then. Anybody feel moved? I will go ahead and recommend or do a motion to approve PL two zero one nine dash zero zero eight nine CUP and zero zero nine zero SP to change the use from the downstairs of sixty five Union Ave from automotive to childcare, including all of the staff recommendations. All right, you meant six fifty one Union? Yes. I think you said sixty five. All right, there's a motion.
Seconded.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor say, raise your hand, and opposed, and it's another unanimous vote.
Well, thank you.
Good luck.
Now, just got one question. Does that mean we can come and get building permits now, just get going?
Now you can start spending money.
Now we can start working.
Good luck to you. Uh, it's mechanic street. Up top on the left. So this lot, actually a butts Union and then mechanic on the back. Yep, that is, that's a pretty good picture. All right, what do we have next on the agenda? We have new business. Appointment of planning board members and members at large to CIP committee. Okay, do we have some volunteers?
So I have three members of the public at large that are willing to participate in this year's CIP process. That would be Michael Foot from the zoning board, Dean Anson from the conservation commission and Ava Doyle, former city councillor.
Excellent.
We were not able to obtain a fourth despite the vigorous effort in offering opportunities to people to volunteer some time for the well-being of the city, so hopefully in the future, we'll be able to fill that void.
So we're, we're short one member of the public? I'll see what I can do in my recruiting of people. How about three members of the planning board, so I'll serve on the CIP again? Is there anyone else here that's interested? Oh, Claudia, yeah. Did she express an interest or are we just recruiting her because she's not here?
She expressed interest last year, I know that for sure. I have not heard any positive.
Do we have to decide tonight or can we just?
Can you reach out to her?
Thought it was in September.
Technically, it doesn't start until September. So theoretically.
After the next meeting? Well, how about?
In the limit, but it is plausible.
All right, how about me, Claudia and Sarah and they, they can opt out if they don't want to?
Okay.
How's that? Does that work?
Yeah.
And then if they wanna know, then you say, well, Peter picked on you because you weren't here. And that's not true. It's not true. It's because they do their homework.
And perhaps we could also appoint the three members at large and then perhaps if you know somebody that might be interested in volunteering for.
Well, I didn't say it out loud, but Gary Dion might be interested.
Perhaps with some gentle persuasion, you might be able to.
Persuaded.
Get him involved in such a great opportunity.
All right.
So. So you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, let me see if I can do this. I, I make a motion that we appoint Claudia, Sarah and Peter to the CIP committee as well as the three members that you've acquired and the motion.
Excuse me, didn't Charlie say he was gonna do this also?
He had interest in it.
He did. He did it last year too and I, I tried last year, but I only.
So you have an alternate. You have an alternate if one of the other two girls don't.
Yeah.
And then we appoint Charlie St. Clair as an alternate.
There you go. I like that.
In case the other two weren't interested.
He can't see on TV, he's too far away, so he can't have a job to him.
He's in Sturgis.
Oh, that's right, Sturgis is this way. Well, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
I seconded.
He did.
Sorry.
I don't see any older business. Planning department report, we've been waiting for that.
We're working on the historic overlay district and we will be restarting the master plan steering committee to talk about some other opportunities of, of enacting the various recommendations of the master plan.
Okay. Yeah, it might be nice to, to take a look at this short-term rental and historic district issue from the standpoint of the master plan. I think Kim Coulet's comments were kind of appropriate. We wanna be sure that what we do is transparent and that everyone sees the process. I understand that staff does a lot of things behind the scenes, but the more that we can do, I think, in the public's eye, the better. And, and I think we do need to tie everything that we do back to that master plan in more than just a passing reference, that's all. There are some need, there, I think there is a need to do some, some revisions to that master plan. There's just chapters that haven't been revised, right? So.
There is even a chapter on the, on cultural history and preservation.
Right.
That we might wanna tackle if we're gonna go ahead with the historic overlay district.
Yep. When was the economic chapter updated last? Was that one of the recent ones?
Officially was more than ten years ago. It was two thousand six. We have a draft that was done in the two thousand sixteen timeframe. But everything that happened from two thousand fifteen and on concerning the master plan, by the time we got the land use chapter done, we're, we're staring the twenty twenty census in the, in the eyes here and all the data that is in that draft is gonna change, so that my, my feeling is we wait till the twenty twenty census data is available to update the economic chapter.
Do we ever contract out any of the?
The, the economic plan, uh, chapter was contracted out. We have a transportation chapter that was contracted out and we have to have a natural resources, a very rough draft of a natural resources chapter that was also contracted out. A couple of those things, I think that we can incorporate help from Lakes Region Planning to do some of those things.
I was gonna say, in eighty five or eighty six, when I was a student, I interned at Lakes Region Planning Commission, it was paid internship and I rewrote the economic chapter back then. So that's how I knew that sometimes we did rely upon them to, to do the work. All right, so it looks like we do have some work to do. Any, anything else?
If you've been reading the Daily Sun the past week or so, you'll probably be aware that there are a couple of new entities in Lakeport that are planning some, either in the process already and planning some significant investment in the immediate Lakeport Square area. We have had initial discussions with one of the developers. Very, very exciting, very preliminary at this point in time and still in the. Very, very exciting, very preliminary at this point in time, and still in the somewhat confidential stage, so I'm limited on what I can talk about, but this is, if, if even just some of this comes to realization, it would be a very exciting time for Lakeport Square area.
Well, this, what I do know that isn't confidential is exciting. That folks from Recycle Percussion are going to do something really interesting with that old Woolworths building that Mr. Everett has purchased evidently, the, the old Oddfellows block and the Cape on Clinton Street right behind it, which I have a, you know, I will predict will not survive the year. There are a number of pieces to this. I mean, this is near, dear to my heart, Lakeport Square. And, you know, one of the problems that we've always had in Lakeport Square is the access to off-street parking. And the need to widen that square even more to allow better stacking lanes, I think. And a longer stacking lane, certainly northbound, that would take parking spaces. So whatever we end up doing in Lakeport Square, we have to work around that transportation piece. That's.
I would just do back-end parking. It's the new answer to everything.
New answer to everything?
Yeah.
Whatever it is, I think it's exciting for Lakeport, and I'm, I'm thrilled that somebody is taking interest in that area, and hopefully, we can work on that out.
It is, it will be interesting. The Daily Sun has expressed an interest, apparently, in taking over the most of that ground floor of that building. That is actually a three-story building, I believe, and the second floor is primarily a huge opera house room. And then there's a balcony level, but there's also building space up there, too. So that could be a really interesting multi-use rehab. And, and what's exciting to me is I've been driving by that building for years, thinking, it's gonna get torn down. I mean, it's just, it's in the way. It's a huge white elephant in the square. You either gotta do something with it, or it's gonna go. I'm surprised it hasn't burned down. It's been there so long. Well, the back is wide open now, so that's not good.
Dean, is there any challenges of getting the utilities performed before the final construction is done?
We, we have talked, we have talked with the property owners up there, and they know that they need to get all the utilities done the next couple of months before.
It would be a shame to finish and start cutting again.
They, they, they cannot, they cannot afford the penalty that will be imposed on them if they dig in to the pavement after it's finalized. So they, they know they gotta get it done.
This town will just go up and down.
They gotta get it done soon, and they know that.
Unfortunately, we're used to it now, so.
I have never seen so much simultaneous construction going on, road construction in the city, ever. It's just crazy. It, it's no way around it, you know? Just when you think you've found a way. I work in Laconia, and I live in Lakeport, and there is no way to get there. Messenger Street doesn't exist from Irving Street on.
It does not. That's right.
From the railroad tracks.
Well, the guy that invented Jersey barriers gotta be laughing all the way back and forth to the bank.
Right. What are they doing that's taken so long on, on that section of Messenger? Do we know?
There's actually two, maybe three, separate projects. I think there's some water main work, this sewer main work, and then there's a drainage project that was started last year when the lake was drawn down. And now they're, they finished the drainage work, I believe, and they're working on sewer now. The plan is to have pavement done by, right around Labor Day. That's the plan right now.
All right, can't wait.
Good training center there.
Yeah, it is.
It's just amazing.
I think it's Irwin's.
I thought they were gonna do the bridge on Court Street this year.
Nope, that's next year.
So, so my final comment, and it's a pet peeve, but by God, I'm gonna get it on the record. So we, I was on capital improvements last year, and I remember Parks and Rec came in and they made a nice presentation about Bond Beach. Bond Beach is eroding into the lake. Now, it is, the erosion is actually undermining the pavement. They had no staff there all summer. The bathhouses are locked. There are two porta-potties in the sun. That's what we got. There's a kid that checks the stickers, but there's no lifeguards, so there's no staff there at all. The drainage swale that was put in maybe fifteen, twenty years ago is filled with sediment. So every time we get a torrential rain, it just overflows, and it takes everything with it. There's nothing but roots and rocks. All right, I got it on the record. When they come before the capital improvements committee, and they tell us about all these luscious projects they're gonna work on, they get us all excited, it's very disappointing to see them not do it. And they don't have to, obviously. All we're doing is ranking these projects for financial purposes, but.
We're, we're only one month into the new fiscal year, which the last, the, the capital improvements plan that you worked on was the 2020 capital improvements plan, which started a month ago, so we'll, we'll.
It's eroding into the lake.
I not disagree.
But maybe next year.
But maybe next year, we'll, we'll chain it into a Roots and Rocks Park.
We won't have any lifeguards next year, either.
Well, not at eleven bucks an hour. They didn't have a single applicant. It's not, they couldn't hire anybody. They didn't have anybody apply.
Look at the restaurant quotes.
Pharos, yeah. Well, they were depending on, on immigration. They were depending upon foreign workers. Guess what? It seems that the immigration process has become more difficult for even Eastern Europeans. Imagine that. Okay, is there anything else that we can dispense with this evening, other than listening to me rant?
Please, please, no.
I second that.
Wait, wait, that was not, that, you're out of order. I, I've been dying to find somebody out of order all.
Does that mean I have to leave?
All right, so, anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn? Sensing none, we'll stay in session, then.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting of August's planning board.
All right, well, no second is required. Meeting is adjourned. At eight forty-eight.
It'll be one o'clock next month, in the morning. If all those applicants show up.